Good morning. I will call the April 7th Planning Commission to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call roll. Commissioner Leo Molitor.
Present.
Commissioner Steven Anstott.
Present.
Chair Nora Adukas here. Commissioner Michael Westner.
Present.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez.
Here.
Now's the time for public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 5, LU-070048. This has -- this item's been continued from March 24th and March 31st, and we're figuring third time's the charm. So, we're at the point now in the hearing where we were having questions of staff and questions of the applicant.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Disclosures, because I do have one.
I'm sorry, I skipped that.
That's quite all right.
I'm calling for disclosures. Start at the end. Commissioner Rodriguez, any new disclosures?
No disclosures.
Madam Chair, at the end of our last meeting, Mr. Cronin approached me in the hallway and asked me about the authority issue. I directed him to write a letter, which he did, which is now in our exhibits, referring to that communication. And the basis of the conversation was my concern of who was on first as far as the authority to soundball, EIR, et cetera. So, it is in the record if anybody wishes to see the conversation that we had. Thank you.
Any new disclosures? Yes?
At the conclusion of the meeting, I basically apologized to the folks from Waste Management that we were unable to conclude the matter as expeditiously as we'd liked. That's the sum total of it. I have no disclosures since the last meeting.
I forgot. I have disclosures. I get a periodical called Waste Age, and I read an article called "Lengthening a Landfill's Life." It's a very general article. I'm not sure whether I'm going to put it into the record. Why not? And I'm not sure if that email thread between staff and me needs to be put into the record or whether it's already in the record. All it is, all it is is questions and answers. No? Okay.
Yeah, I don't believe it's needed.
And the other thing that I need to disclose is I read the article in the Ventura County Star and the comments on it regarding the continuance at the last meeting, and learned that some people are very distrustful of this process and thought that the reason it couldn't have been a doctor's appointment that cut short the meeting last week, and it wasn't solely because of the doctor's appointment, but that somehow there was a backroom deal going on with the mayor of Simi Valley and the chair. And I just wanted to say that that is not true, and he could come up and kiss me on the cheek, I would know who he was. And you can attest to that because I already demonstrated I didn't know.
I'll give you my point.
Okay. So, anyway, so that's all of my disclosures. Right now, I think we can move on to closing comments by staff and questions of staff and of the applicant.
I don't have any closing comments. I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, there've been a number of exhibits that have been submitted for the record. I'd be more happy to answer any questions you might have about those exhibits. Probably the most important one, I believe, well, no, not the most important. There was an important one that was submitted, and it's an errata sheet to the FEIR, and it made some corrections as stated in the errata. If you have any questions about the corrections or why we felt the need to change that, I'd be more than happy to answer your questions.
My only follow-up, Madam Chair, is whether or not the applicant has seen all the new exhibits that have been submitted to us. Have you had an opportunity to review?
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Molitor.
I asked Dan this beforehand, but on errata number five, under the third bullet below the paragraph that starts with "A capacity study," about the third sentence says, "The capacity study assumed that waste continues to be received from out-of-county sources and that there are no distinctive disincentive or fees that do not currently exist to limit receipts." Dan thought that the issue was the fees. I'm concerned with the first part of the sentence. That is being eliminated from the EIR. And this sentence, "That the capacity study assumed that waste continues to be received from out-of-county sources," I think that was true in the EIR. Why is that being admitted?
Yeah, the intent wasn't to make it appear that that wasn't included in the analysis. I think, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Nelson and I discussed this this morning before he prepared this errata sheet, and I didn't see the exact corrections, but that's a good point. But that was not the intent of him striking out that sentence. I believe what he was trying to do -- because the capacity study analyzed a number of different scenarios, and in some of the scenarios, they did analyze the effects that fees would have as a disincentive on waste import. So, I think he wanted to pull that out to make, just to make it clear that, because somebody could read this and make it and interpret it to make it, to believe that that analysis wasn't done in the study, but it was in fact done. You know, I could get that clarification from him, but, you know, out-of-county solid waste definitely has been a consideration all along throughout the EIR and was a consideration in the waste capacity study as well. He hastily threw this together this morning when we identified these errors. He might have just, that might have been his considerations, but...
I just, at this point, this is my suggestion, that at least the first sentence that reads "The capacity study assumed that waste continues to be received from out-of-county sources," that that is, that was in the EIR, and I guess object to that being deleted when it's not true, if I'm assuming...
Yeah, it looks like what should be struck out is starting with "and," and there are no disincentives or fees that do not currently exist to limit. Well, actually, probably "and" to disincentives. I mean, it's just, I could get clarification from him on that, but...
Good.
Yeah. But I can guarantee you that was not his intent. I mean, clearly, they considered out-of-county solid waste throughout the EIR in their analysis and in the waste capacity study. Indeed, that was the whole point of the waste capacity study, was to see what disincentives could be applied to reduce out-of-county importation of solid waste.
So, what do you suggest? Do you want to check with him, or can we remove that part? Just, I mean, my suggestion, Madam Chair, that we remove the section that says, "Or fees that do not currently exist to limit receipts."
Or perhaps in your recommended actions, you could direct us prior to the board hearing to work with Mr. Nelson to make further revisions to that section.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Comment?
Yes.
Daniel, in your response to Commissioner Molitor, did you say that out-of-county waste imported into the landfill was not a consideration?
No, excuse me, if I said that, I misspoke. No, it clearly was a consideration. Indeed, that's been one of the most...
It was a consideration.
Absolutely, yes.
Because I read in your response to Commissioner Adukas, and I'm hustling around looking for that question, you spoke to that specific issue, and you said that the EIR and its capacity and needs were based on Ventura County's needs, and it's, I assume that to be its tonnage, and that the reason that LA County or any other outside-county waste import was not considered was because it was not within the parameters of the EIR and the needs of Ventura County. Now, am I wrong on what I read?
No. To clarify, the 15 years of disposal capacity, that's capacity for Ventura County. And what was analyzed in the EIR is with the estimated increase in importation of out-of-county trash, how would that affect the 15 years disposal capacity for Ventura County? But I believe the question and response to which you're referring was whether or not one of the project objectives stated in the EIR was to allow for capacity for out-of-county solid waste, but that clearly was not an objective. That was used to evaluate the project alternatives.
So, you're saying that the county's capacity, projected capacity on a potential expansion as been presented here is strictly based on Ventura County's waste needs?
For the purposes of the objectives of the EIR stated in there.
Okay.
So, when you're evaluating the five alternatives in the EIR, you are, there's no objectives in the EIR which consider out-of-county trash. In other words, we're not, the purpose of this EIR and this project is not to provide for out-of-county trash. That's not one of the objectives.
So, the estimated data capacity or closure, and for purposes of discussion, let's call it 2060, I think, was proposed, or the estimated, estimate seems to be used quite a bit, the estimated closure date. That then would be reduced by two things. The amount of fill that's used to cover the tonnage and the amount of tonnage received from outside the county. It would reduce that targeted or capacity date downward.
Okay, first point, as stated in the errata, there was a correction made, and it's actually, it's 2053 is the estimated closure under the proposed project, but...
Okay. I'm not holding you to the data, I'm just using the reference point.
Right, yes. So, that 2053 date was based upon, okay, given the estimated population growth in the county, estimated waste generation rates for the county, given the landfill closures, which includes Tolon Road as well as a number of other landfill closures within LA County, and the...
Within LA County?
Yes, LA County, and the estimated amount of out-of-county trash that is likely to be imported to the landfill. SAIC came up with a figure of, okay, 2053, 53 would be the estimated closure date, provided that the proposed project is approved.
So, taking that premise, excluding or restricting the amount of waste imported from LA County would extend that 2053 date outward?
That's correct.
Some proportion?
Yes. That's correct, yes.
So, every ton that's imported takes away a ton of capacity from Ventura County, for Ventura County needs, I guess is what I'm going there.
That's correct. And that was the purpose of the recommended condition that Commissioner Anstott requested that we draft was included in Exhibit 40. It's precisely for that purpose, to ensure that the county is given priority first above out-of-county solid waste.
Okay. And at the present time, approximately, the numbers vary between 33 and about 37 or 38%, I believe, but approximately that amount of daily tonnage is received from out-of-county?
That is correct, yes. That's based upon 2008 actual...
Oh, no, I understand that. And a 3,000-ton per day capacity, that we're being asked to consider increasing to 6,000 tons per day capacity?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And the projected capacity on the present landfill, using 2008, I believe, as a base date, was outward 18 years, or 2009 possibly, was outward 18 years to approximately 2027, using the estimated tonnage that was being processed in 2008?
Yeah, under the existing operations, given the existing maximum daily allowance, yes, the estimated date was roughly a closure about 2027.
And that includes, and that is approximately, for discussion purposes, 30%, 35% out-of-county tonnage?
Yes, using 2,000, that is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anstott.
And following in the same vein, there was some discussion regarding when Ventura County would reach the total daily tonnage. And I believe the gentleman who spoke with the EIR said somewhere around 2030, and the gentleman from Waste Management said somewhere around 2050. Is that right?
That's correct, yes. So, it was about 2037, they'd start, they'd reach that 6,000 tons per day.
What is the reason for the variance between the two estimates? Do you know?
I haven't seen the models that Waste Management uses to make those estimates. I've seen the numerous spreadsheets that SAIC prepared, but I can't comment on Waste Management's models.
Can you just...
No. So, assume for the purpose of argument, we have a viable condition. Is there any reason to believe that we wouldn't have the use of this landfill for the, tell, 2050 something? Ventura County would take, I guess what I'm asking you is, will this landfill take the total daily tonnage from Ventura County throughout 2050 or whatever the date is?
Yeah, I mean, the way the condition's written is...
No, that's not what I'm asking you. I don't, not how it's written, I want, I've read it. What I'm asking you is, can we say today that if this project is approved as staff recommends, that this landfill will take the total daily tonnage from Ventura County through 2050?
Yes.
Okay. Now, to the condition itself, obviously, it's an interesting condition, the way it's drafted, it's, obviously, doesn't say what I asked it to say, and I'm assuming there are reasons for that. But are you and county council assured that this condition will fly? It was obviously drafted in such a way that you were taking into some considerations beyond the scope of what I was asking for.
Dan, why don't you take it first, and then I'll speak to the legal issue. What, Dan, why don't you take it first, and then I'll speak to the legal issue? Yes, I mean, the objective was to achieve what you requested. However, once again, there were other considerations, such as contractual relations between Waste Management and others. We want to make sure that we wouldn't compromise those. And besides that, I don't know specifically how it deviated from what you requested. I mean, if there's something of concern, I'd more than happy to respond to that, but...
Well, I could have drafted the condition in one paragraph. We have several, and I assume there are reasons for that, that the county council will explain to us.
Well...
The question is the legality of the new condition that is being proposed and was drafted, and it's found in Exhibit 40 in a memo from Mr. Clement to your commission. The way that that is drafted passes legal muster. It fits within the county's police power with regards to land use, and that there is a sufficient nexus that is created between what is being sought after in this condition and the operations at the landfill. So, I, from a legal standpoint, don't have a problem with how the new condition that Mr. Clement has drafted reads and applies to Waste Management. Question is, can you make this simpler, and can it simply be a one-line condition saying, "Simi Valley landfill shall not receive any out-of-county waste," which is basically a condition that is similar to one that is found in the Sunshine Canyon of CUP that was issued by the Los Angeles County? Again, I do not have all of the facts and circumstances in the Sunshine Canyon situation to speak intelligently about how that condition was first developed and how it found its way into the CUP. But it's clear from the Sunshine Canyon documentation that both the operator of that landfill, as well as the permitting agency, agreed to that term and to that condition. And so long as they agree to it and that they could abide by it through a mechanism such as monitoring the amount of waste and where it comes from and getting waste origin information, that's all fine and good. Another example that I think that was discussed between Mr. Clement and I was a situation out in the county of Riverside, and that involved a landfill, I think it's called El Sabrante, I may be wrong. But in that situation, that, you have to look at that from the facts and circumstances of Riverside County. Riverside County and the operator had some relationship that is very different than the one that we have here in the county of Ventura. Here, it's my understanding that Waste Management owns the property and is the operator of that property as well for the use of the landfill. In Riverside County, I don't think that that was the case. There was more of a partnership between the county of Riverside and the operator of the landfill. Again, the facts are not all before me at this point in time. But in the El Sabrante situation, they used a contractual agreement between the operator and the county to effectuate this prohibition of out-of-county waste or out-of-jurisdiction waste for the purposes of El Sabrante. So, you have two mechanisms now. One, through the CUP. Second, through a contract. I can just tell you right now, the contract is a whole heck of a lot easier to obtain that type of restriction than a CUP. In a CUP situation, one, the situation we have seems to indicate that there was an understanding between the two parties, rather than just a simply unilateral condition placed on the operator by the permitting agency. In this case, we have some testimony from Waste Management indicating that they're fearful of some sort of contractual or economic interference or things of that nature. My research into the law indicates that, again, so long as the county is acting well within its local land use police powers and can make a sufficient nexus and rough proportionality in terms of the tests that's set forth in SEQA as well as case law, that a condition like that could fly. But again, it would need further analysis, not only from that legal standpoint, the constitutional analysis of it, but also whether or not it has any effect on the SEQA document as well. Does limiting the trash to only in-county have any type of SEQA impact as well? That is a condition that I don't think that was fully analyzed as a part of the FEIR. It did discuss it to a certain degree in the project alternatives, but again, that's not where the recommendation is. But if you go down that road and make that one of your preferred choices, then I think some analysis has to be done. I haven't had the opportunity to fully look at a project that has that as its core element, which is in-county waste only. I don't think that that was a, again, I may be wrong, but was one of the alternatives as far as a surcharge only with regards to in-county waste? I think that there was one alternative that spoke about a very high county surcharge rate, which would in effect be a prohibition of out-of-county waste. But that's my recollection of what the SEQA document says.
Hmm.
So, the long answer is, the short answer, excuse me, to that long answer is, so long as the county acts well within its land use police powers and can make a strong nexus and rough proportionality with regards to that condition and what it seeks to do here, I think that it would pass muster.
Okay. Well, with that finding, we obviously have an environmental impact report that advises us that certain conditions can't be mediated or remediated, and we're being asked to find for this statement of overriding considerations. And the first one deals with being able to find a source of disposal for waste generated within Ventura County. And if we didn't have this condition, I'd be voting no project. That's why it's important to me. But I think if you can, if we can say that for the life of this CUP, we will have a source of solid waste disposal, then I can vote for this.
Are there any other questions of staff? And a reminder, Scott Tignak is here, and he is available for questions. Are there any questions of the applicant?
Madam Chair, if I may, one. Scott? The question's going to relate to the increase in truck traffic as it relates to 23, 2,000 Oaks, and out of the 118 through Moore Park. Currently, it's my understanding that you're contractually bound to both cities to pick up waste.
That's correct.
So, you're already in those cities anyway because of contract?
That's correct.
Okay. If this project were to move forward, how many additional trucks do you think, other than the local contracted trucks, do you believe over the next 20 years, would be going either through Moore Park or 2,000 Oaks?
Yeah, that'd be very difficult. It depends how much city of Moore Park and 1,000 Oaks would grow, but the trucks would increase according to their population growth. More people, more trash. As far as anything from East County or West County, excuse me, that's still be kind of speculating what route the trucks would take coming across from west to east.
Okay, I didn't ask my question right, and that's my fault, not yours. Other than the ones you're contractually bound to, unless you say you're bound to pick up waste at Oxnard or Tolon's closed for the day, those exceptions. In other words, it's not the normal, usual contracted traffic. Any feel for that? I know it's speculative, but is it 1, 2, 1,000?
No. I couldn't even measure to say. I know that we'd be capped by our truck trip limit, so it couldn't increase by 1,000 or anything like that.
Well, one of the questions that's up here is, when Tolon closes, all right, that traffic's going to impact either 118 or 23 from West County, Oxnard. Have you taken a look at that?
Yeah, I mean, for example, if Tolon was generating 1,500 tons, or like Del Norte, that generates about 1,000 tons a day, using transfer vehicles, 1,000 tons moves and 48 truck trips.
How many, sir?
Forty-eight for 1,000 tons. And that's roughly the way that waste is transported long distance. Del Norte, this transfer station itself, would receive about 250 individual trips from pickup trucks to trash trucks, but they transport out only with 48. It's more economical to do it that way, and better for the environment.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Excuse me, just a trailing comment. In response, clarification on your answer, Scott. Assuming Tolon's closings, since it is the Santa Paula Pedro Fillmore area, they would have to drive through the 118 or the 23 through Moore Park?
Or 101.
To the 23 through Moore Park into Simi?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So, regardless of the state route, whether it's 118, whether it's 101, or whether it's 23?
At some point in time, they have to hit the 118 freeway to our facility.
And we're talking, and did I hear you say 1,500 tons Tolon's?
That's what their permit limit is. I don't know what they take a day.
Okay, so that would be 48, 48 is 1,000 tons, then you're talking 60, 72 vehicles per day? If that closed?
Over a 10-hour period.
Okay.
If I may follow up. So, then you would, at that point, look at what's more economical to drive the 101 to the 23 to Simi rather than stop and go through Moore Park?
That would be the decision of the hauler bringing the waste to us, how does it come to us, what's most economical for them?
And it's $6 a gallon for diesel, or your methane, whichever.
Or biofuel.
Thank you.
What about Santa Barbara waste?
How would it get here? We currently don't, I don't think we receive any Santa Barbara waste right now. We do. Not that I know of.
Thank you. You're done.
Chair Adukas?
Yes.
I just had a question here about whether or not the public hearing was closed or not.
No, not yet, but I was about to close the public hearing. And so now, the public hearing is closed, and it would be time for deliberation discussion.
Madam Chair, if I may. Again, 3,974 plus pages that we've all deliberated on, three different sessions. The recommended action is, again, having been through a number of these, as well as staff, is firstly, determination is, is the EIR adequate according to SEQA? If we determine it's not adequate, then the rest of it is just mooted. So, I would like this body to at least deliberate to that point before we go on to conditions, alternatives, all of that. So... So I guess the first question is, do we feel the EIR is adequate? Now, adequate, again, does it give a reasonable number of impacts, the alternatives, mitigations, or in this situation, Exhibit 27 with the overriding considerations? So that's where I'm at at this point in time, before I get into whether we put air conditioners in the Simi school, those kinds of deliberations. So I'm concerned that we have to have 45 pages of overriding consideration on Exhibit 27. But does that speak to the adequacy or the fact that we've identified these specific situations? Two specifically come to mind, the county does not have a housing requirement nor a park and recs requirement, so therefore, there has to be an overriding consideration because it doesn't exist. Then there's the other issues as far as the traffic and et cetera. So as far as the specifics, I'm open to being convinced, or either way, by the rest of this commission.
I believe the EIR is adequate.
I don't think the EIR is any good with all those overriding considerations, but I think it's valid and I think it's adequate. I think it's addressed it. I certainly do not like the 45 pages. I don't like some of the mitigation methods that had to take place, but at least it tells me what they are and it explains it. And whether, I don't like it, it's not a good EIR, but I think it did what it was supposed to do, and I think it's adequate.
I think this commission would probably go on the circuit and talk about EIRs and landfills infinitum into the future, given all the materials we've had digest over the last approximately two months, probably months and a half. I don't like what I read. I am completely taken aback by the extensive overriding considerations that have to be considered and addressed. There's other things within it that I want to talk about, but to the question of whether the EIR is adequate, reluctantly, I would say that it is, in my opinion.
Well, I probably should have said reluctantly, too. I just went to the adequacy of the document. I don't like to impose any detriment upon anybody. And I've heard a lot of conversation from a lot of people thinking the people sitting up here don't care. Where I live, I'm 300 yards from the entrance to Tolan Landfill, so I understand what it's like to be put to some detriment. But I don't like what we came up with, but the statement of overriding concerns, the need for solid waste disposal. I know what happens when it's either too expensive or too far. People dump everywhere, we have serious problems. I don't think in 30 years of practicing law, I ever saw anything more studied, more diagnosed. I agree with everyone, we don't like the matters that can't be mitigated, but as long as I can be assured that Ventura County has the use of this landfill to 2050, I believe that it's appropriate. I don't like it, but it's appropriate, just like I don't like living next door to a landfill myself.
Commissioner Dukas, I didn't hear Commissioner Dukas, did you say you felt it was adequate?
Reluctantly, I have to say it's adequate.
Okay.
One of the things that I said going through this is that while the EIR may be comprehensive, it's incomprehensible, and I found that there were a lot of numbers that seemed to be moving targets, and some of it is the nature of the project. Knowing that landfilling is an art, there's a lot of movement, there's a lot of reasons why there would be a range of, you know, everything from when the landfill is projected to close, when our needs would stop being met if we didn't have your elegant solution to this challenge. I found it to be very frustrating to want something just, I asked it first, oh gosh, I've got the email here. I was interested, in March 17, I was interested in the leach aid for the old portion of the landfill, and that's the Class 1 landfill, where the leach aid is treated and sprayed into the atmosphere to control dust and provide irrigation. And I just wanted to see what do they, how on earth do they treat that stuff? And I never felt like that answer was adequately answered, that question was adequately answered. And the, I know that it's been pointed out to me, and I've been given exhibits, one of which was a complete red herring. It didn't tell me anything about what the constituents were. I looked at the WDR, that waste discharge requirement, and saw that you couldn't exceed certain things, but I didn't see where the testing was actually done. I thought, well, is it really with, is it within our power to do anything about that, or is that some other jurisdictions, you know, that's their purview and ours is just this? But from the site visit, we were given a document that showed a map, and I asked the question, and the staff wasn't sure what I was talking about. I can take it out here. It's in the folder that we were provided at our site visit, but the numbers don't add up. I mean, simple things like acreages, different, shifting numbers for the number of truck traffics. To me, I did not feel that it was an adequate document just because of these inconsistencies. And that's my individual judgment, and it sounds like the other commissioners were satisfied, so it's done.
Can I ask a question, staff? This is the document I think you're referring to. Is, and I don't recall, is this in evidence and has been accepted? Because we received it out in Simi the other day we were there. And this is the document that Commissioner Dukas is referring to, Danielle, that you couldn't quite get a grasp of with regard to her response.
It's in the folder, within our little bag. I mean, just truly.
And the discrepancy is 45 acres, as I recall. And you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
There was a binder that was handed out to each of you, and it's a different?
No.
Okay, so there's a confusion, because in the question, I didn't know to what you were referring, and I didn't receive the bag, so I don't know what was in the bag.
So you're answering.
I picked it up for the obvious reason.
So my question is, is the material, did the commission accept the material that was presented by Waste Management as an exhibit? Because certainly it's been referred to.
We have not accepted any of the exhibits that have come, which, that go from A to TT so far.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Addison, the binder is an exhibit. It was an exhibit of that site visit, quote-unquote, here.
It's the folder.
But the folder, I do not believe was included as an exhibit. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
So the folder is an exhibit?
No, I don't believe we have accepted it. It's been labeled? No, probably so. If you'd like to volunteer yours?
I would suggest enter it as an exhibit to this hearing, as it has played into your considerations.
And I assume the applicant has seen it since they provided it. So you're willing to stipulate it?
And you want us to consider it?
Well, we've received it.
Madam Chair, do we have, at this point, do we have to accept the EIR? Is that one of the resolutions and motions we must take?
Yes. I was going to take you through that little path.
Okay.
Okay. Because confusion reigns supreme, and that's my job.
So just a question of how we do this. Should we accept all exhibits that, the hearing is closed? Do we accept all exhibits, including my magazine article, my email, the folder? Is there anything else?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So I reopen it to accept these exhibits, and then I close it again?
No need to reopen the hearing for that purpose.
Okay. It's an email thread that just has the question.
U, V, W. Okay, we're up to double W.
W, W.
All right, Madam Chair, while the secretary's done it up, I'll move that the commission accept all the exhibits we have received in the last three up to W, W, and also exhibit up to 48.
Second.
Please vote. Aye?
Aye. Now, what we can do, and that's why I wanted to make this a little bit of a bifurcation, is that as you read the new Exhibit 40 that has been provided for staff, is to accept, adopt a resolutions 1A through F, which is that we have reviewed and deliberated on the EIR and to recommend it to the board of supervisors. That does not include the CUP or the conditions. So I forget the vote, that the adequacy and that we have reviewed. So that'd be 1A through F.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All right. All right, then, again, so then what we're at now, since we've determined that there's an adequate environmental impact report, then the issue becomes the recommendation of the CUP as far as the evidence for overriding considerations and/or additional conditioning, those kind of things, and here we go. The alternative, remember, we have the no project or the one that the staff has recommended, or anything in between.
Are you saying we have to?
Do we have to separately make the finding regarding the overriding considerations, County Council? Do we do that separately? Is that a separate issue? Or is that?
I think that was part of the first motion, correct me if I'm wrong. That's already been.
Yeah, that's correct. But now, what we're now, now what conditions on the CUP, all right, because that's, you've got a base now.
Right.
Now you can make the adjustments like, that we have suggested, as about as the ton each, the alternatives that are before us, how do we recommend that adjustment to the supervisors?
Just so that I understand, you're looking at staff recommendation 1G.
G and H, and then of course, item 2.
Got it.
All right. Again, it gets back to reluctantly, is I think the magic word, we have adopted the EIR is adequate per California environmental plan. Now, what are the terms and conditions do this commission feel to recommend on the CUP?
Is it appropriate for me to offer any recommendations, given that, am I stopped from this deliberation because of voting no on the adequacy of the EIR? Or can I offer my opinion?
I don't think you're precluded from offering an opinion at this point in time, or if you want to provide the commission with an alternative CUP condition than the one that is being set forth. I'm looking again, I think it's Exhibit 40 is the most recent memorandum with all of the staff recommendations.
Well, what staff is recommending is the reduced capacity alternative, and what Waste Management would like is what was, what the project was as proposed. So there's space between the, there's literally space between what Waste Management would desire and what Ventura County staff is recommending we do to lessen some of the significant impacts. So my general thought about this landfill is that we need it, and I think that would surprise many people considering how carefully I have questioned Waste Management and staff. I feel that there are outstanding issues that were brought up by the city of Moore Park, the city of Simi Valley, the Simi Valley School Board, Rancho Simi, and the city of 1000 Oaks. I think that's all. I think that some of the things that they are asking for are absolutely reasonable. I think it's reasonably foreseeable that when Tolan closes, there's going to be increased traffic. Whether or not it's significant, you've already decided per the EIR that it's not. But I think there's room there to better, to come up with a better project. So that's what I would like to see.
May I start? I'm going to take a few minutes, because I put a lot of thought in this, and we all know there's an elephant in the room, and the elephant is Los Angeles County, and it's trash. This makes it difficult anyway. I feel that the reduced capacity project alternative put forth by the planning department is too generous. What I would like to do is work on that area in between that you talked about. I'm asking the commission to open your agenda to page 21 of 59 of the staff report, which has a comparison of, 21 of 59 of the staff report. That's it, you have it spread out, Chair. This has a comparison of the project feature, the existing, what Waste Management has proposed, and the reduced capacity project alternative. I'm more or less generically going to propose something like this, and I would like to go through those. The first one is total CUP area in acres. The existing is 297. Waste Management wants 887, and that's what planning departments. I'm recommending 25% increase in that. A 25%, which I believe is a modification, I might be wrong, that the CUP, that Waste Management got when they modified their CUP a few years ago. That's my understanding. Number two is the waste disposal footprint in acres. I'd like to recommend, again, 25% increase of the existing acres, which is about 231 acres. However, if Waste Management wants to use that acreage that is now designated for landfill for their maintenance and trucks and so forth, I would add that additional acreage onto the 25%. Number three is landfill volume, cubic yards. Again, I would add 25% to the existing, bringing it up to about 54.3 cubic yards. Number four is permitted daily recyclables. I would keep that at 3250. Number five, permitted daily disposal tons. Here's the biggie. Waste Management wants 6,000. They now have 3,000, which they're not using. We're still not using that. I would like to keep that at 3,000 tons a day. Number six, permitted daily recyclables. I'd like to keep that at what both Waste Management and the county is recommending, 3250. Number seven, elevation limit. I'd like to keep that at the existing 1,118 feet. And number eight, road trips. They would adjust it. I don't know how to adjust that. I'm making this recommendation because of many concerns that we all have, especially the children in the schools. We know that Simi Valley has the lowest. We know that Simi Valley has the lowest quality of air in the county right now. I feel with the county's recommended reduced capacity project, it would make it, we know, even worse. That's one of the problems. I think the twenty-five percent increase is reasonable. Commissioner Onstott, I don't know how long that would extend the closing of it. But for a starting point, that's just my recommendation. Thank you for the time.
Commissioner Molletar, is that a motion or is that just for purposes of discussion?
We're discussing.
Okay.
That's discussing now, because I'm certain there are going to be other objects.
Just to follow, you were talking about on the truck trips, the last one, eight-twenty-two. That's been bouncing around. I believe we've settled on eight-ninety-two as opposed to the twelve-ninety-seven. That was one of the discussions that went back.
No, I.
So you want to keep it at eight-twenty-two or you're not?
No, I didn't say anything about road trips. I thought that they would adjust to the reduced tonnage, and I don't know what that adjustment would be. If you bring in fewer tons, you'd have fewer truck trips, and I don't know what that number would be.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to give a feel because if we're going to give them a C U P with a limit, even if they may or may not exceed.
Whatever.
Well, I'm just saying because that eight-ninety-two, I believe, was the discussion that the applicant used. Again, try to follow the graph here, so instead of the twelve, hundred-and-ninety-seven. I like that. Okay.
Commissioner Molletar, can I just ask a simple question? What were the first two points of your list?
The first, the first point was total C U P area. The existing is two-ninety-seven. I'm saying, take twenty-five percent of that, which is three-hundred-and-seventy-one-point-five, and then add, if they want to use that thirty-some acres that's now designated as landfill for their vehicles, for their maintenance shops, and then take that acreage and add it on to the twenty-five percent. Am I clear on that? Okay. And you want the second one, too?
Yes.
Second one was waste disposal footprint. I'm taking the existing one-hundred-and-eighty-five and increasing that by twenty-five percent, which would be about two-hundred-and-thirty-one-point-twenty-five.
can be adequately handled into the future at some level less than what's being requested, both by the applicant and the alternative, alternative one. I like Commissioner Duquesne realize that this county does need to expand its landfill capacity, but I'm troubled by the fact that in coming up with the E I R, the parameters of the E I R and the request, it's inclusive of needs for L.A. County. So in that regard, Ventura County's needs are obviously something less than that and could be accommodated in something less than the acreage that's being requested in this application. I'm not sure what that number is. I'm also troubled by the fact that while we're not at that three thousand tons per day capacity, we're being asked to double that to six thousand tons per day, with clear understanding and knowledge that there is no way Ventura County is going to reach that capacity in the near future, regardless of projected population increase, and it would probably require the closure of Tolan Road to start moving in that direction. So that pushes us out into the area beyond approximately twenty-seven, as I recall the An increase in the capacity from three thousand to six thousand just accelerates our timeline to reaching that data capacity. And I realize we're not talking about a month and twelve months or eighteen months down the road. We're talking about out there around twenty-fifty-three, twenty-sixty, give or take, with consideration of L.A.'s needs. Yet it's not mentioned anywhere in the report that we, in fact, those needs or that degree of import capacity is part of this overall consideration and part of the E I R's findings. I'm troubled by that. I don't know that we need to have six thousand tons per day, and that might be worth considering and discussion if we amend staff recommended action to something less than that, but I'm open to discussion on that.
Madam Chair, please. Commissioner Rodriguez, my proposal does drastically reduce that six thousand to what, three thousand plus twenty-five percent. I also want to be, I want to be clear that I understand is that what we're required to do is make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
That's correct.
And I guess I'd like to ask the County Council, do we have to make one recommendation? Can we make, for example, you've got the, the planning department's recommended, if we accept another reduced project alternative, can we recommend both of them? And they don't have to accept either one, but it's giving them more of guidelines. Is that possible?
Your vote is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The Planning Commission can only take action when there's three votes on any one particular action. So my recommendation to you and direction to you based on your bylaws is that there be one recommendation. I don't see how you can make two recommendations that are different from each other, that, if that's what you're asking for. You want to make two recommendations that are different from each other?
You could do a high and a low, and they can put, they could do anything they want. But I understand your point that one recommendation, so that's clear to.
And on this point, Commissioner Westner made a motion with regards to the adequacy of the E I R. The E I R is the factual basis for your decision-making. If you are finding it to be adequate, then that is the basis, your factual basis for making these decisions about the entitlement that is before you, the C U P. So to say, okay, I find the E I R adequate, but now I'm going to disregard the E I R and what it says and go in a different direction, the question becomes, does the secret document support your recommendation?
I would assume that my recommendation is quite a bit below both the Waste Management and the county, and that anything in the E I R, I would still be under any of those unmitigated and mitigated alternatives or issues. Is that right?
Commissioner Molletar, if I may, I think that was the basis of staff's argument as they look at the five alternatives, and they came back for the reduced, that everything had been identified, but they were reducing it. So if this body wants to reduce it further, the impacts would be restricted because that was the premise of the staff's argument. Okay? So that's my understanding at this point in time, and I'm willing to move forward with the network. If we're reducing it, that's, I believe that the E I R covers that, and again, for the third time. So I appreciate County Council's comments, but this is where the judgment rule comes in, in my opinion.
Commissioner Onstott, do you want to weigh in?
No, not right now.
Okay. Are there more comments on Commissioner Molletar's suggestion that it be reduced to where instead of a doubling, we've got these twenty-five percent increases and, but we keep the material, the MRF? Are there any more comments to Mr. Molletar's suggestion that you want to, that you want to make?
Again, for discussion purposes, that's why I asked the question of Mr. Tignak as far as going through Moore Park. Having lived two blocks from the one-eleven for a number of years since nineteen-eighty-two, I'm very aware of the truck traffic in that community as the trains. So as we go down this road, just understand, one of the things I'm looking at selfishly is the discussion is to, unless the Waste Management specifically contracted to come into the community and pick up the trash, that the extra vehicles, whatever they may be, that they take the one-on-one to the twenty-three and not come down to one-eleven. So, but that's a real narrow, selfish part on my part, having more than one alignment have to be done because of the intersection of Moore Park Road and one-eleven. So that's the only thing I would add at this point in time.
Comment on that. Assuming that that might be the way we choose to go, what authority do we have over carriers that Waste Management has no control over? We have Harrison on the west end of the county. Are we saying then that Harrison would be required to go from?
Again, we can only condition the person that's in front of us. So again, it may not be feasible, but that may be something I would like to.
I just have a clarification on your one-eleven versus one-on-one to twenty-three thing. You say that in jest, right?
No, he didn't.
I mean, Commissioner Onstott's already said he lives three hundred feet from a dump. I live literally two blocks from the impacts.
Having had boots on the ground there for a number of years, no, he wasn't kidding. It's a serious impact, and not just from noise.
What troubles me is we have spent an inordinate amount of time reviewing incredibly difficult topics, far beyond, most of which technically are far beyond my ability to comprehend. And at the eleventh hour, after the public hearing is closed, we're talking about a twenty-five percent reduction over the staff, is it staff recommended or the original project?
No, not twenty-five percent reduction. It's like a seventy-five percent reduction probably from the staff recommendation to what I'm recommending. Twenty-five percent increase.
Well, my concern is, having this thrown at me at the eleventh hour, all these thousands of pages, I can't begin to comprehend what this would mean on the ground. I don't know what the economics would be to the operator, whether it's fair to them, unfair to them, what it would change their willingness to accept a condition which is very important to me. Just opens up so many questions that I'm, I feel kind of shell-shocked, actually. I don't know where to begin. I understand that that's would lessen the environmental impacts. I was prepared to vote staff recommendation with the condition that we talked about, based on the information that I had received to date, and that's why I'm at.
Is that a motion by you?
No. I just wanted you to know how I felt.
I have kind of a unique insight into this process, given that my husband took a job that we thought would last for two years, and it lasted eighteen. There are, it's not just the county process that the applicant has to go through, there are innumerable other agencies that go into expanding a landfill. There's air quality and water quality, there's Fish and Game, there might be Fish and Wildlife Service. There's just a number of things that just adds on time. One of the things that I found compelling in the public testimony was the information we got from the Ventura County Economic Development Corporation. I think it's Bill Perata, talked about how that you don't want impediment to your economic vitality and that part of an area's economic vitality is the ability to handle waste. You want certainty with regard to, because there was another thing I found very compelling in the public testimony, which was everybody wants you to pick it up, but they don't want you to put it there. That is more true than you can imagine. So I was, my thought was to go in completely the opposite direction than what you have offered here. I see room for making it a better project, making it so that the concerns of the school board, the cities, the park districts that were involved, that you could get a better project with more cooperation from the applicant in exchange for making sure that there's reliable disposal capacity in the county. So that's my thought on your, I understand where you were coming from, but I just have a completely different point of view with regard to, and if I lived in the area, I would be as concerned as all of the residents that have come before us that have stated their concerns, and I would feel just the same way. But there's, you know, you've got, you've got your gut, you've got your heart and your head, and we have to go with our head here.
I'm glad you brought that up. I'm going to do the old band thing right now. Is, I sat up here when we closed Baylor, sat up here when the people were throwing paper at us on Weldon, and that's how you wound up with Tolan, Mr. Onstott. And the big deliberation then was the evildoers from Sam and Barbara bringing their waste down to us, particularly the diversion of Casmalia. So these conversations, you're properly right, are, have been in place, and we continue to live with the issues of Baylor and now Tolan, and we had deep concerns at Tolan putting something like that, as we did with the, unfortunately, the jail in prime Agla. But again, you have to have overriding, using the magic word, considerations. You're right, everybody wants it picked up, but nobody wants it in their backyard. I remember specifically on the Tolan matter, the people from the west end of the county just saying, why haven't you sent everything to Simi? So again, you can imagine how many trucks that would have been added to us over the last, since ninety-seven. So I support what you're saying, Madam Chair, and Mr. Onstott, but I also hear what my two colleagues are saying as far as the tonnage and the reduction. So what I'm hearing is two different opinions up here. So I think somebody needs to pull the trigger.
Well, I'll move, I'll move to accept what I recommended.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, ma'am.
Okay, please vote. Yes, yes.
Can we count, we have one G, one H. How does the motion affect those two? Can we put it in those terms? Are you recommending now that your motion as articulated replaces one G? Can we be clear on the record about what's being voted on? And staff, do you understand what's, and then the question to staff is, can the recommendation be supported by findings in the record with regards to this recommendation?
I would echo what our County Council has to say. If you were really going to vote on that motion, I would have to have a lot more understanding of specifically what that is. I need to see it in writing. I need to spend about fifteen minutes looking at the environmental document. I mean, there's, there's a lot of concerns with having a vote on an item that I haven't had any time to look at. So if you were really going to vote in that direction, I would want to have a little bit of a recess to see in writing what Commissioner Molletar has proposed. Okay, so we'll, do we table the motion for a fifteen-minute break? So Commissioner Molletar? Okay, fifteen minutes, we'll be back five till one. Thank you for your patience. While we have a new recommended action, does the applicant have a copy of the, the applicant Okay, Commissioner Molletar.
I would like to withdraw my motion and hope that Commissioner
I would like to withdraw my motion, and hope that Commissioner Westner will withdraw his second.
After I got beat up by Judge Lane this morning, I'm in a frisky mood, so maybe I won't, no, I'll withdraw it.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to make another recommendation. This is Action 1F, and that is that we recommend that the Board of Supervisors find that CUP case number LU070048, subject to the attached conditions of approval, Exhibit 24, as revised pursuant to the revisions in Condition Number 16, set forth in Exhibit 38, including the additional condition set forth in Exhibit 40, and with the, and with the, and with revisions to Condition Number 1, to further reduce the disposal area physical limits as determined by the Board of Supervisors. Complies with the CUP approval standards of VCN CZO, based on a substantial evidence presented in Section E of the Planning Commission Staff Report. Now, I know that's kind of complicated back and forth, but I want to go, I want to call your attention to Exhibit 24, to when I refer to here, and that we're recommending to further reduce the disposal area physical limits as determined by the Board of Supervisors. On Exhibit 24, these are the disposal area physical limits which we're recommending that the Board of Supervisors reduce. The first one is that the SVL RCC or P boundary may expand from 297 acres to 887 acres to accommodate. One, an expansion of existing disposal footprint from 185 acres to 367.5 acres. Next bullet, an increase in waste capacity from 43,500 cubic yards, 34,800 tons, to approximately 108,000 cubic yards, 86,500 cubic tons, for a net increase of 64,500 cubic yards, or 51,000, 51,700,000 tons. I, I'm sorry, 64,500 cubic yards to 51,700,000 tons. And approximately, next bullet, approximately 519 acres to be used as a buffer around the disposal footprint. The buffer areas around the landfill shall primarily consist of open space areas, but may also include access roads, material and equipment storage, yards, mitigation areas, some of which will include educational features, recycling facilities, and equipment and drainage structures. What we're doing here is taking, if I understand it, is taking the county's recommendation and saying, "We want you to consider reducing what the county is recommending for this project." Now, the other action I'm recommending is Action 1G, it's very similar. It simply says, "Recommend that the Board of Supervisors grant CUP case LU07-0048, subject to the attached conditions of approval, Exhibit 24, as revised pursuant to the revisions in Condition Number 16, set forth in Exhibit 38, including the additional conditions set forth in Exhibit 40, and with revisions to Condition Number 1, to further reduce the disposal area physical limits as determined by the Board of Supervisors." Very similar to the first, to 1GF, but we have to make two recommendations. So, that, those are my, I am, I am recommending approval of what I read.
So, that, so that's a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
The second was just a typographical consideration. It's not F and, and G, it's G and H.
Yes, yes, thank you.
That's quite all right.
I haven't done very well on the alphabet.
No, no, no. All right, so that would, that would do it, the typographical.
Thank you. I appreciate your scrutiny.
So, so, just so that I can understand this, there isn't that 25%? It's just to further reduce it?
Yes.
Okay.
To, to give them the option to reduce it 85% if they want.
Okay. Are there comments to the motion, Commissioner Onstott?
Well, based on my earlier statements, you can imagine that I'm not for the motion. We have the ability to have a landfill in Ventura County that will take all the county waste through 2050 or some number out there, which is invaluable. I understand and appreciate we have environmental concerns, but it's not as if we're divorcing ourselves from police powers. If there are problems of health and safety out there, whether they're water or air, the police powers of the state still exist, and enforcement proceedings can be commenced. I'm not in favor of the motion. I would move staff recommendation.
Other comments, Commissioner Rodriguez?
I'd like to add an additional recommendation. I'd like, I'd like this commission to consider recommending to the Board that it establish a reasonable, reasonably defined surcharge to out-of-county waste imported into Simi Valley landfill, separate and apart from, I believe the number was $2.38 per ton that currently goes to the county, which is received from both, from regards to where the waste originates, in county or out of county. We need a landfill, and nobody's going to hear, here is going to argue against that, I don't believe. The issue is, you know, the size, and I think the Board ultimately is the decider, is going to make that, have to make that determination regardless of our recommendation. But it's clear that, that tonnage imported into, into Simi Valley landfill is having a direct impact on the capacity and the overall operation at Simi Valley landfill. There's an impact on the environment in this county as a result of, of the tonnage that's brought in, in a variety of ways. The most obvious is truck, truck traffic, wear and tear on the roads, and, and the impact from the, the vehicle's ozone and carbon monoxide. I would propose that staff, in concurrence or in council with, county council, draft an ordinance that the Board, that gives the Board the ability to, to establish a reasonable surcharge. In early discussions with county council, I discovered that there are other jurisdictions that have similar fees that have been established for a variety of reasons. Certainly, the impact that, that out-of-county waste is going to have on Ventura County, theoretically go, could go on beyond, well beyond any year we can imagine. And I think establishing some sort of reasonable surcharge allows the county, the Board, to receive some sort of funding source that they might consider using to mitigate some of these issues that might and will ultimately arise with any expansion of Simi Valley landfill, accelerated by the LA County waste.
So, so, we, we have a motion that has these two actions, G and H. I was, I would ask if you would hold on to that recommendation and that we, that we just do G and H, up and down, up or down? That's my preference. Commissioner Onstott, Commissioner Westner?
I was going to ask him to uncouple his motion too and make a separate freestanding motion. I think we can all support that.
Commissioner Westner?
I concur.
Okay, so, so now we have before us Action G and H, motion by Commissioner Molotar, seconded by Commissioner Westner. Comments to the motion, Commissioner Westner?
I can support it simply from the standpoint, obviously, and I appreciate Commissioner Onstott's position in the 11th hour. I think this sends the message from this, this body that we have deliberated and reviewed all the materials and all the information, both for and against, and weighed back and forth, and the ups and downs. Again, this is a recommendation, it's not the final decision, and it belongs at the Board of Supervisors. I think this motion reflects our reluctance and our concerns, and, but it also helps give them the direction that we would like to see this tweaked, for lack of a technical term, and based on, I think, staff can, when they discuss this with the supervisors, reflect that correctly. I think the, now we've knocked the rough edges off on a lot of this stuff, that we're not going to limit them as if we could, but at the same time, that we feel that they should deliberate on adjustments, and it also allows the applicant to be more specific in their requests when they go in front of the supervisor. So, I can support this as presented.
Well, it's not the direction I would go in, in making our recommendation to the Board. So, let's, please vote, Actions G and H. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
No. So, can we go commissioner by commissioner, please?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Leo Molotar?
Aye.
Commissioner Stephen Onstott?
No.
Chairman Nora Educas?
No.
Commissioner Michael Westner?
Aye.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez?
Aye.
Okay, so, are there any other directions to the Board that, that we need to make in, yes?
Just a clerical, because I just caught this. We have voted on two to allow the, the custodian, that has been presented, that the clerk of the Planning Commission is the custodian of the documents. So, I make a motion that we approve number two on the recommended actions.
Is there a second?
I'll second, yeah.
We're, we're allowing the clerk to maintain the records.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Unless you want them, Steve.
Okay, so.
I would like to, at this time, make one additional recommendation for the Board. I'd like the Board, this commission, to consider recommending to the Board that it research and establish a surcharge on the import of out-of-county waste, and establish some fee that is, that can, that can be defined and, and supported as reasonable. As I stated previously, there are other jurisdictions out there that have similar fees, and it, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not proposing this as anything prohibitive. Certainly, any fee that established, that would be established as a surcharge is not intended to be prohibitive of continuing business practices, but at this point in time, as we sit here today, Ventura County is being impacted by the import of out-of-county refuge, without any way to, to consider mitigating, mitigating in any way. And I think establishing a surcharge, a reasonable surcharge, would allow the county the option, the ability to possibly deal with any mitigation issues that, that might result from this, as a result of any funding that might be realized. So, that's my motion, that, that we recommend to the Board establishing via ordinance some sort of reasonable surcharge on that.
Second the motion.
Okay, comments to the motion by the commission?
Madam Chair, I can, I can support it, and I, the, obviously, the EIR addressed that in alternative four, I believe, as, as, whether it's $10, $20, $40, it was part of the presentation. So, I believe that there's sufficient documentation with the EIR for the Board of Supervisors to look at that ordinance.
Can I just ask staff, what would be the, the purpose of such as, could we, could we make a, a recommendation to the Board that the surcharge be used for, I think, maybe alternative, you know, investigation into alternative methods of trash disposal, or, or recyclables, or, or some program to that? And I'm, I'm just confused that if you found, I'm confused by, by what the purpose of the surcharge would be.
Let me answer first, Bruce. I'll make it clear, in the EIR, the purpose of the surcharge was to reduce out-of-county trash in order to increase the disposal capacity for Ventura County. It was not analyzed in terms of being used for facilitating research for alternative technologies. However, as Mr. Beluski is probably going to explain in a minute, there's already an agreement in effect where we are collecting fees which are used for research in conversion technologies, but I'll turn that over to Mr. Beluski at this point.
Well, I concur with what Dan said. There is a separate agreement already between Waste Management and the county. It's outlined the current CUP, as well as the operating agreement that the county maintains with the landfill. So, such revenues are already paid annually by Waste Management, and the county does receive them in, for this explicit purpose of conversion technology type research and development.
And I'm, I'm still confused about what this charge would, this surcharge would be used for if we found, if this commission found that the EIR is sufficient and, no mitigation is necessary. I'm just, I'm just wondering what it would be used for.
There is an impact on Ventura County by this import, without any offsetting mitigation. Ultimately, the Board is the decider of how funding is going to be used. In, in the current time, I think the testimony was that approximately $2.38 per ton goes to, to the County General Fund, to, to distribute or budget as it sees appropriate. My recommendation on ordinance would be no different than that. Ultimately, it would go to the County General Fund, I assume, because I don't think as a Board, we can, we can obligate the Board to use money in a specific way. An agreement that's been, that's spoken about, by staff, is a separate issue. It's, it's an agreement, it's already been done. And I am assuming you're talking about that figure of $11,000 that was identified in the staff report?
That's correct. It's approximately $11,000 a year.
Okay. So, my recommendation for a surcharge does not include a specific purpose of the use. I'm just thinking out loud on potential uses that they might consider. Ultimately-
So, it's in addition to, to what's our new CUP? It's in addition to, okay? Further comments on the motion, Commissioner Onstott? None? Okay, please vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero vote.
Yes, yes. Okay, so we did item two, we added further direction. Is there, is there anything else? Okay, I just want to say thank you so much to the residents who came out, the public officials, Waste Management and their representatives, their employees. I want to tell you that this has, this has been a very grueling process, but I, I feel confident that, that everyone who came before us was heard, every question was answered. We do have differences of opinion about, about these facts, but I just want to thank my fellow commissioners and staff for, for going through this, even though just by happenstance it went over three days. If you count up the hours, it, it doesn't add up to three days, not at all. So, thank you very much. So, moving on, we are going to, do we want to take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, five-minute break. Okay, receive and file memo regarding communication towers in Farina Beach Community.
Okay, this is the topic that we had discussed before, but I don't believe Commissioner Was- Onstott was here, and he'd asked for this to be done. So, so briefly, what it is, is it looks like in the Farina Beach area, we have four antennas, and, you know, as people have applied for antennas over a 20-year period-
Right.
-they naturally come up at different times. But these four are as such that, that three of them were considered within a matter of months, and so the fourth one that's going to come up, it's CUP 4776, has an expiration date of 2014. And at that time, when it comes up for an expiration date, what we're going to do is recommend for a six-year time limit on that, so it will expire-
recommend for a six-year time limit on that, so it will expire at the same time the other four do, and we will review them cumulatively. So that was the quick and dirty report back for what you had asked for, Commissioner Onstott.
Thank you.
And, okay, any questions on that?
Just, has the HABAD gotten to the Board yet?
No, the HABAD hasn't gotten to the Board yet, but it has a date, let me look.
May 3rd.
May 3rd, look, Robert has it memorized.
Okay, that's, thank you.
So going over your agenda, I think that we have looked at the times that you are all going to be here. Let me just look really quick, planning commission.
You asked me about June 2nd, and I'm trying to find out whether I'm going to be a quarter.
Oh, I asked you about June 2nd, absolutely, because the housing element is going to be here on June 2nd, and so that is a very big project for us.
I don't, I should have an answer for you first next week.
Oh, next week, okay, and then is that a date that, Commissioner Rodriguez, were you out that day, June 2nd?
No, I'm good on the 2nd and the 9th.
Is everybody else good on the 2nd? So it's just Commissioner Onstott, and you'll know soon. So at least we have four of you, right, okay, for the housing element. We do want to, want to keep that one on track, and then it looks like May 5th, we have an appeal, and on April 28th, I have a CUP for a temporary outdoor wedding, outdoor weddings in a festival. This is a, this is a facility that is in Ojai right now, it came before me as the planning director, and I have deferred that decision to you under the authority that I have in the code, specifically due to public controversy. It was going to be appealed, and so we are just moving that down here, and that will be on April 28th. So that is what your agenda looks like, the June 2nd is a very critical date for us, so I'm happy to have four of you, and if we have Commissioner Onstott join in, that would be great. Do you have anything for me?
Madam Director, the question on the fifth meeting, that is just to bring you back if they have not resolved, have you heard anything from either attorney as far as resolution?
I have not, have you, Robert?
I believe that matter was in court today. Another member of the county council's office is handling that case, I can't tell you what's happening with that.
Okay, so right now, it's looking pretty, unless something magical happened today. Thank you.
I'd still like a status report on Toland, especially now that I know something about landfills.
We are absolutely working on the status report of Toland, we are, there's a lot of work that is happening on that right now, on the odor issue, and so probably in the next few weeks, what we're going to have is the Bob Gallagher, the Director of the Environmental Health Department, and Mike Vegas, the Air Pollution Control Officer for Ventura County here, just to kind of go over an overview of Toland and any sort of odor issues, there hasn't been, there hasn't been a notice of violation issued for that, but we want to go over the process with you, there's several agencies that are involved with it, so we're going to do that in a verbal discussion with you, and so we will agendize that on a day, maybe on the 5th. Anything else? This meeting's adjourned.